Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon, City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, to order. The time is now seven o'clock. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
And we'll ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Beaton?
Here.
Councilor Brock Smith?
Here.
Oh, hi. Councilmember Kreas?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember DeSaro?
Here.
Councilmember Vanderstube?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is the approval of tonight's council meeting agenda. Counsel, before we entertain a motion, just want to let you know that item six B, under new items, actually requires an ordinance. So maybe a motion to approve the agenda with the following updates. Item six B will be ordinance thirty-nine twenty, and item six C will be ordinance thirty-nine twenty-one. Would there be a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Navore and a second by Edith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item three is community comments. If there's anyone present in council chambers tonight who would like to address counsel, please come on up to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and if you could limit your comments to about three minutes unless you need a little bit more time to get your message across, just let us know.
Hi, Ed Johnson, downtown Mount Vernon. Anything else?
No, is three minutes adequate for your message tonight?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Had some time as a retired guy, and I looked into several things in this state that I didn't understand. And one was the map for the 2024 election. I noticed that most of it was red, and some of it was blue. Well, some of it blue was the city where the most of the population is. But what's really odd is that all the vote, elector voters voted for one. So I found out this state has had since 1880 a winner-take-all attitude. I don't find that appropriate at all. But in 2016, three of those voters decided to probably represent their constituents and voted in favor of another. They were all fined $1,000 each. So this state is not democratic. I don't care what they say. You know, the proof was in the pudding with the registration fees that we, or car tabs, that we tried to pass twice, and that didn't happen. Why is that? The people voted. Well, there you go. We're also number thirty-six on the list of democracies failed on the list. Top five were Finland, let's see, Finland, Denmark, ah, European countries. But we're not even close. So I'm kind of wondering, what are we doing in America these days? It doesn't sound good. Also, there's still safety issues downtown Mount Vernon. There's, you know, distractions in these new cars. It's just terrible. I mean, in 1970, we didn't have that. We were told both hands on the wheel, bench seats, can't have your arm around a girl or whatever, and drinking a pop or beer or whatever. Can't do that. Today, they built in all these distractions. So I guess we're going to have to have some new laws similar to the machine gun law. You buy a machine gun, you got to use it properly, right? Because these things are dangerous. There are substandard materials in them. They're plastic computers on wheels. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Ed. Anyone else wishing to address counsel tonight? Also, say if you're here for the Capital Improvement Plan public hearing, you could just wait a little bit until that item's introduced. But any other comments other than the Capital Improvement Plan anyone would like to speak on?
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. Jerry Douglas here, representing the seniors in Mount Vernon once again.
Thanks for coming, Jerry. Is three minutes enough for your message tonight, or do you need a little more?
No, three minutes is enough.
All right.
I want to thank you all for all the hard work you do. I know how difficult it is to get here at seven o'clock. I eased in two minutes before seven. So I just want to remind you that we have an issue with the county. They are going to hopefully find a temporary location for the senior center, but it will be temporary. So I'm here to tell you that we need a permanent location, and we are all looking. And some of us have some ideas about where that, where that could happen. But of course, the issue always comes back to money. Who has the money? No one has any money these days. So our resolve at this point in time is to do a huge fundraiser for however long it takes to actually build a building without tax dollars used, and build it with loco money. So if you have any ideas, let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other community comments tonight? Right, we had one written comment sent to communitycomments@mountvernonwa.gov. Steve, are you going to read that one?
I will, Mayor. Thank you. This came in yesterday via email to mountvernonwa.gov, and it's addressed to the mayor and the council. First, I would like to say that the transparency of the current mayor and city staff are a refreshing change from the past. The mayor's coffee and his availability to the mere common people of the city looked well. I can see Peter smirk from here. That's why I was really confused when I read, yes, I read the fine print, all the revisions prepared for the municipal code 2.12. I very strongly oppose the changes down on page 218 and page 223 of the meeting agenda where these changes are mentioned. First, the revision proposed in 2.12.020a1 says that the deadline for presenting any matter before the consideration of the council is being revised to the Monday of the week that precedes the scheduled meeting. This is not the Monday of the meeting week. It is the Monday 10 days before the meeting and actually before the committee meetings usually discussed at council where public comment on council reports can be made. This is either a mistake or a grave turn of affairs. I can see the Monday of the meeting week being reasonable, but not a 10-day lead time. Second, and perhaps more egregious, is the revision proposed to 2.12.090b2 where the manner of addressing groups reduces the comment time of the commenter from five to three minutes. For those math challenged, that's a 40% reduction in the public comment time. Understanding that the meetings are seldom overrun with commenters, I find the need to reduce comment time quite pleasantly. On the few meetings where the public descends as a horde into the chambers, we should be happy enough that people wish to participate in the proceedings. Last thoughts. If you wish to implement these changes now, remember the optics. With these changes, you are positioning the city to squelch public comment and debate ahead of the levy lid lift. Your record of transparency would go straight down the drain, and perhaps rightfully so. Signed, Scott Correa, Mount Vernon.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Last call. Okay. We will move on to tonight's consent agenda. It includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, deposits, wire transfers, claims, and agreements. Would counsel like to move for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Navore and a second by Gary. Any discussion on consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. For reports, under reports tonight, I just wanted to remind and direct members of our public who are interested in past council committee meeting minutes to find those meeting minutes on the city website, www.mountvernonwa.gov. And the minutes are located in the Agenda Minutes section from the first page. You can just click right to that and find those. Item 5A is council member comments. Any council member comments this evening? Councilmember Brock Smith or Vanderstube?
Just wanted to give you that.
No, thank you.
All right. We will move to item 5B, the mayor's report. For mayor's report tonight, your next opportunity to join me for conversation will be Tuesday, October 21st, at 10:00 a.m. And we were invited to meet at First Lutheran Church at 2015 East Blackburn Road for this month's meeting. We usually cover topics at mayor's coffee, ranging from traffic to construction to planning to finance, pretty much everything in between that's city-related. So please plan on joining us at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, the 21st, at First Lutheran Church. Next up, we're going to celebrate some of our successes, one of our successes. The city's wastewater treatment plant is located on Britt Road southwest of downtown. See a picture of it there. Looks like a space station. It's sort of tucked away, maybe mysterious to some of our residents, which is why I want everyone to know that Mount Vernon has received the 2024 Wastewater Treatment Plant Outstanding Performance Award from Washington State Department of Ecology. Ecology evaluates over 300 treatment plants statewide, and our plant in Mount Vernon is among the top performers based on a number of criteria, including overall plant compliance. Now, our plant manager, Gary Duranzo, is out of town tonight. But I wanted to invite some, some folks from the wastewater treatment plant. Wonderful, I'm so glad you're here. So awkward to present an award to no one. To come on up and, and as you do, just wanted to acknowledge you for the exceptional level, level of effort that you put into protecting our water quality and, and to provide this critical service to, to our community. It takes a considerable effort and takes a considerable amount of teamwork to, to operate and maintain our top-performing wastewater treatment plant. And so we appreciate the entire team that is represented by Chad tonight. Mr. Tezwick is here, and we're going to do a photo. Are you up for that? I'm sorry that I made it sound like it was optional.
We've got to hear people. Here we go. Come on. I'm connecting. Peter told us we were going to. I always get them.
There we go. You got it? You got it, Katie? Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Oh, I should have made you do a speech. Oh, where are you going? All right, we are moving on to, I'm sorry, that is your mayor's report. Thanks, Steve. We're moving on to new business. Item A is a presentation from Community Action and Special Projects Manager Steve Sexton will introduce this item tonight. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, we're going to have a pinch hitter this evening. Mariners probably could have used one or two of those today, I'd be thinking. But I had Bill Hinkle on the, on the council memo from Community Action to present an update on their activities over the last year. But instead, we're going to have Liz Jennings join us.
Hey, Liz.
I'll go ahead and turn it over to Liz if you want to come on up and.
Welcome, Liz.
Take over here, and I'll get out of your way.
Thank you all. Thank you, council and mayor. Thanks to Steve. Bill is out at a conference this week, so I'm stepping in for him. So thanks for having us. I think you've probably received a letter from him last week, which I'll reference in the presentation. So my name is Liz Jennings. I'm Director of Community Engagement for Community Action of Skagit County, and this is your annual update from Community Action. And thanks for the partnership. I especially want to recognize current board member Melissa Beaton, past board member Mary Hudson. I know that we've worked with all of you and my colleague at Community Action, a staff member. I recognize that you all have day jobs, and Arice is, is a member of our team at Community Action. Specifically tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about how Community Action partners with local governments and specifically the city of Mount Vernon to stabilize lives and help people get ahead on their goals. Starting with this, this photo here, this is a couple of folks, Kendall and Alfredo, from our Street Outreach and Recovery Navigator teams, which partners with your police department, embedded social workers in the iOS team, to engage in building long-term relationships with folks who are living on the street, walking alongside them, providing some resources, and being there when folks are ready to opt into housing and recovery programs. So one of the things that we're really excited about is to share our mission. And we know that many of you personally and the city council in your planning documents and your mission and vision share ours. Our vision is a community in which everyone works together and poverty in Skagit County. And the way that we do that at Community Action, we can't do it all, but our part is to stabilize lives and equip people to meet their goals. And then we also build a stronger community, and that's a big part of how we work with you all. You're helping out a lot with the stability stuff, helping with the Mount Vernon Resource Center, street out, partnering with Street Outreach and Recovery Navigator. But we're working on prevention and long-term solutions together, like developing housing that people can afford and those long-term goals, those 20-year goals in your comprehensive plan for housing that is achievable for everybody in the community. So we really root our work in understanding community needs and trying to focus in on what we can do well and not duplicating services. We're doing data collection and data analysis. I'm sorry to our staff who might be watching this. We do a lot around data. And so our community needs assessment is ongoing and every day, but we do a deep dive every three years. And as you probably know from other resources, because we pull in public health data from local hospitals, from employment development organizations, countywide, housing affordability continues to be the highest need that's pushing everything else. When people can't afford the, over, over 50% of the people in Skagit County are housing cost burdened. And so we're looking at that and nutritious food, mental and behavioral health, living wage jobs, and affordable childcare. And I want to especially thank the city for your partnership with North Star, the Housing Consortium, the Food Policy Council, and other initiatives to work better together on these issues than any one organization can do on our own. So our part of that at Community Action, this is our menu of services. When somebody comes into one of our resource centers saying, hey, I'm having a hard time making ends meet, we help navigate them not only to Community Action Resources, but hundreds of community partners, city, county, and statewide. Well, there's, there's a photo of my colleague, Arice. She's not running for reelection, so it didn't seem gratuitous to include this. So how do we do that? We have four resource centers across the county, Mount Vernon, most recently partnering with the city of Anna Cordis to open that resource center, long-term partnership with the county in concrete and serving all of East County. And then we are the sponsor of the Robert M. Gates Skagit Vets Connect in Burlington, our fourth resource center. And so in addition to having the phone and email and a friendly front door where people can walk in, we also go out to where people are. And that's, of course, our Street Outreach programs, senior and disabled volunteer services, WIC and infant case management, and many other programs, transportation programs, filling in the gaps where some of our good partners, like Skagit Transit, where they've seen, also have seen needs, we fill in some of those gaps in helping lower-income community members access transportation. So how do we do it? We call it the journey. And, you know, sometimes I've heard people say, oh, resource centers, you just like give people referrals and flyers, and they just, you tell them where to go. It's much more than that. When somebody comes into a resource center or picks up the phone, the first question is, how can we help you today? And there's a smile on the other side of it. Someone like Arice, who meets with somebody, like, is it Rutilia, who shared her story with us and, and her baby there. They come in and they might say, like that client said, hey, a friend or a neighbor referred me to Community Action and said I could get some nutritious food here and get my baby off to a good start even before she's born, and support our nutrition afterwards. That's one thing. And then those friendly resource centers, the service screeners, start asking a few other gentle questions and find out, well, this might be their immediate need, but how can we wrap that family around, around with all of the resources that folks might need? So that's going to be the punchline tonight. When I get to this last slide, we're hearing a lot of concern from the community, from seniors, from veterans, from others who are really worried that their federal or state benefits might be cut off because of other things going on in the world outside of our control. And the main thing that we're asking you today is to help spread the word. Community Action is open. Our resource centers are open. And that first step of the immediate relief and the resource navigation, we're here to help people with whatever resources exist at that time. So that's the first thing. If your front desk folks in the city are getting those calls, or you as a city council member are getting those calls, Community Action is open. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, locally governed by a board of directors, and we are here for people who need that help. Vast majority of people who come to Community Action just need a light touch, little bit of information. Some people have never had to ask for help before. It takes a lot of courage to reach out and ask for help. A lot of folks just need a little bit of direction, maybe a phone number, maybe a little bit of help making that phone call. Most of the folks we work with every year, we only hear from once. For others, they might need a little bit more support, and that's what we call care coordination. So again, it's that longer-term relationship that might walk alongside a family to find out what their goals are. For example, with this client, in addition to good nutrition and giving that baby a healthy start, I heard that it was getting a better job. And asking some of those gentle questions, it's like, oh, living with several families in a overcrowded basement apartment, housing might be another need. Food's the immediate need, a job's another need. Let's, let's work on these goals together. How do we break it down into manageable steps to achievable goals? And so some folks, like our infant case manager, you know, they, they find out somebody wants a better job. Well, what's one concrete step? For that client, it was getting a driver's license. Something as simple as getting a driver's license. Signing up for other programs, helping to understand what it takes to set up a health appointment, or how to find transportation when you don't have a driver's license. So that's what care coordination is, and that journey is helping people achieve their goals, no matter what their situation is in. And for many people, that journey includes giving back. So we're very excited as Community Engagement Director. I'm very excited because a lot of our volunteers are people who have benefited from these programs. So that whole family approach, again, it's not transactional. Somebody comes in and asks for some help on a particular goal. We're looking at generational change. So helping the entire family get ahead on those goals. A little bit of countywide data. Whoa, nearly 60,000 people served. How do we get that number? We get asked about our data a lot. And I'll let you know that that number, 59,714 people served, includes all of the people who got food from a food bank in Skagit County. We also provide, this number doesn't include all of the food we provide to the San Juan Island Food Banks and Snohomish Food Banks as well. While we've served that number of, of folks overall, we also have Community Action programs. So when somebody needs a little bit of extra help, they might get help from our Veterans, Supportive Services for Veterans and Families program. They might get help from our Senior and Disabled Program. Those are Community Action programs, not just folks that we've referred out or food that they've gotten from local food banks. We're really excited that our education and employment programs are one of the fastest-growing areas that we're able to support people in their goals. So in Mount Vernon itself, just in your zip code, this is people enrolled in Community Action programs. This is not just referrals out, and this isn't including the Food Distribution Center. Nearly 28,000 people in Mount Vernon, your constituents, are program particip, or were program participants in 2024 with Community Action. We helped over 1,000 people avoid homelessness in a variety of ways. And that might be helping to pay a one-time bill so that they didn't get behind in a bill, in, in arrears on their rent. And it, it involves a lot of other programs, and I'd be, I'm, I'm able, I'm happy to answer some questions about all of those afterwards. Eight, nearly 9,000 people accessed food and nutrition education and resources. And then one thing that we don't hear about very often is the impact of local nonprofits on the local economy. Many of our partners who help with rental assistance and things like that, to over $260,000 went through Community Action to local landlords, keeping people stably housed. So this is some weird data that I'm going to try to explain, but we know that you're particularly interested in this, especially through the North Star Initiative. So looking at program trends specifically around our Mount Vernon Resource Center, which the city of Mount Vernon is one of the many strands that we weave together, federal, state, local governments, and Community Action donors are really important because there is no one source of income or revenue that's going to keep a resource open. We weave these together. And so we've got Mount Vernon Resource Center information here, and then information about some of our homeless services. And in 2023, that number's the highest. Over 2,700 folks served by our resource center. At that time, we had the Contract for Coordinated Entry, the front door to homeless services. That changed in 2024, and that went, the coordinated entry is now administered by VOA. So our overall numbers of people coming into the Mount Vernon Resource Center have gone down. And so that is also the number of people who don't get that immediate one-on-one, in-person support. We are on track in 2025 to probably see the same-ish number of people this year as we did last year. We see a sharp increase as the weather gets colder and as bills start going up when people have greater energy needs. So we served 834 people in 2023 and 2024, about 1,000, and probably about the same number of people we're going to serve this year. These are individual numbers, not households, by our Street Outreach and Recovery Navigator programs. And then this care coordination, that's that whole family approach. Some people call it case management. And we, in 2023, introduced this model of really intensive wraparound services. And we enrolled as many people as we could who were willing, and over the last couple of years have been learning and, and figuring things out. And what we've moved to is instead of more, we've moved to more intensive. So we're working with people with the greatest needs. So you can see down below, we're, we're serving fewer care cord, fewer folks in care coordination, but each individual may be getting more intensive services. So I'm happy to ask, answer more questions about that or have a one-on-one conversation, or that might be something you want to learn about through one of the North Star committees. So, you know, big thank you, not only for your support and partnership on our resource center, but of course, must say, you saw the letter from Bill, our executive director. Many, many thanks for your partnership, and I have, by your, I mean the city council, the mayor and staff. So in 2024, $500,000 in your 1590 funds, and then this year, 474, hopefully breaking ground on Colson View in spring of next year. Two phases, 48 units. I know you've heard other presentations about this. First, first phase will be 24 units, and a really innovative partnership with the Mount Vernon School District for students and their families who are at risk of homelessness. And I want to especially thank the mayor and staff, not only the, the council for the financial support, but the mayor and staff for helping through the permitting process and advice on the federal appropriations, all, all of the partnership that you've given us on this. So the big takeaway today is, you know, thank you for the partnership. No ask today. This is just an update. Things to look forward to working together is that groundbreaking. Also, thank you for appointing me as a rep from Community Action on your Community Advisory Committee, to the Planning Commission on the Comprehensive Plan. And I've heard that there might be opportunities to partner. There's talk going on about how to really up civic engagement generally in local governments, especially around people who are most impacted. And so, for example, around your housing goals, 85% of your housing goals of however many thousand, five, over 5,000 units that need to be built, that, over 80% of that are people who are lower income. And so if there are opportunities to talk about how to partner to increase civic participation of those most impacted, we're here to help. So again, the number one. So again, the number one ask today is please just spread the word. Community action is open. We're here. And a huge thanks to all of our donors and volunteers, including volunteer leaders like board members, for helping us to weave all of these complicated resources together to make sure that our neighbors are stable and equipped to get ahead on their goals.
Questions for Liz from city council or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. I just wanted to say, thank you, Liz, for the presentation. I know that the last couple of years, especially in 2023, losing coordinated entry was hard for the, for community action and staff. But the organization is financially sound, and I'm super excited to groundbreak next spring. And I wanted to give a shout out too to council member Rock Smith. He's, he's online. I think he served as president of the board for five years and really, really was passionate about Colson, and so thank you to Richard as well.
And I'm sorry I didn't say those things because I didn't see his face in front of me, and Richard still serves on our housing development work group and is boots on the ground, scoping out those next opportunities.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you, Liz, and I think this is, this is a project for all of us working in team. We cannot make it alone. We need all the effort, ideas, and desire and planning, and I just want to say rock hard.
All right. Thank you, Liz, for being here tonight. Thanks for sharing with us.
And thanks to Steve for helping us get this together.
Yes, thank you, Steve. All right, item B is an open record public hearing and a presentation of the 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan, and Steve's got this item too. Okay, get away, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. So this evening is, it's going to be our second open record public hearing for the 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. Most of the information in your council memo is in this presentation, so I'll just go ahead and jump into that. Any questions from the council? Open up for a public hearing and, and there. The purpose of tonight's meeting is, again, to conduct the second open record public hearing. Request the city council approve the 2026-2031 Capital Improvement Plan, and by adoption of ordinance 3920. Background, what is the cap, oh, I didn't show up. A capital, what is a capital improvements plan? Is a six-year roadmap for planning, funding, and implementing major public infrastructure projects. It includes long-term investments in public safety, fire and police, utilities for solid waste, our wastewater treatment center, treatment plant, and storm water as well. Transportation systems, parks and recreation, city facilities and technology. The CIP helps ensure that public facilities and services keep pace with growth and are maintained in acceptable levels of service. It's a financial planning tool, not a budget, but it informs the city's annual budget process. The CIP is required under the Washington State Growth Management Act, GMA, as part of the comprehensive plan. The development process, department heads submitted their capital project requests, mayor and staff, Doug, review and revise their submissions. Draft CIP is sent to the Department of Commerce for a 60-day review period. It's also presented to the planning commission for their review, comment, and approval that occurred on September 16th. And this evening is presented to the council for an open public records hearing and approval of the plan and ordinance. Here's the list of total investment over the next six years, 129.6 million dollars, broken down by department. Of course, fires top of the list. Who would have seen that coming? 30, 36 million, 36 million dollars roughly. Parks is second at 34.91, and you can go on down the list. I'll give the details. We did have a lot of completed and/or removed projects. About $48 million came off of this. A lot of that is due to Frank's hard work on the transportation improvement plan, which realigns some of these projects with funding and actual realistic chance of getting them done in the next six years. Thanks to Frank for all that hard work. New projects added, again, some of the transportation trade-offs there, but total, it was about $8 million added to this year's CIP. It was not their last. Top projects by department, you can see those, the top two, Doug called them when he put this together. And we'll go more into detail on this with some photos also of these projects and what they really look like. Any questions this far? Okay, keep on going. First up is wastewater utility project number one. It's a combined sewer and storm separation improvements. The six-year project cost estimate is $750,000 over that timeframe. And this is a map that we have on that. I understand it is very hard to read, but we can try to find a better map and get that sent out to you if you would like. I know Frank has done a lot of work on this and discussions with the council on it. That's our top project this year. And next up is wastewater utility project number two. This is a bar screen upgrade. The six-year project cost of this is about $550,000. And I did use the Google to see what a bar screen actually is, just for my own curiosity. And it is the first line of defense for a sewer treatment plant. It removes all of the large objects from the product to be processed downstream. It's very important to protect those downstream filters and other things, so. Go. Transportation priority project number one, La Venture Road widening, Ho Road to Sigmar Lane. Six-year project cost on this is estimated at $502,800. Again, I believe the council's been briefed on this one as well, and is in the TIPs also. Transportation priority project number two is the North 10th Street and the Warren Street crosswalk improvements. Six-year project cost is estimated at $381,000. This is one that was brought to the city based on a lot of conversations with the neighbors in that area and the, the conflict with the neighborhood, crosswalk, crosswalks availability and traffic with so close to the high school, especially at times of activities, things like that. And Frank has done a lot of work on this. Right, a start on how we can help alleviate that situation. Surface water priority project number one, Park Street Pump Station Upgrade. This is the famous 90-year-old pump, the Park Street Pump. I think that might have been the first year it was put on the tip. I'm not sure, but if or I'm sorry, on the CIP, yeah. Again, this is a six-year project estimated cost of nearly $6 million. I did have a chat with Blaine. He, he thinks that this has a good shot at getting done in the, in the next couple of years, Frank, you think? So that'll be funding, of course, funding pending, yeah, that's the key. But that's, that's encouraging given it's, it is 90 years old and still working, but it'll be there. Surface water utility priority project number two, Carpenter Creek Hickox Road Culvert Replacement. Six-year project cost of $5.1 million is the estimate on that. Frank, I'm, I'm going to keep deferring to you if you have anything to add to that as well.
This is the one the council is very familiar with.
Yep.
And it represents one of the highest value culvert replacement projects we have left in the city.
Okay. Solid Waste, Solid Waste Utility Priority Project Number One is a truck bay to help keep some equipment out of the weather and, and elements. Six-year project cost on that is around about $550,000 is the estimate. Police Department Priority Project Number One. No CIP would be complete without the multi-purpose vehicle replacement on it. Six-year project cost about $650,000 on that. Any questions? I'm, I'm, I'm running through these pretty quick. These are probably all things you've heard a, a time or two, but I'm going to open that up. Police Department Priority Project Number Two is the evidence building extension. Six-year project cost on that is estimated at $500,000. Parks and Rec Priority Project Number One is the Bonnie Ray Park Improvements. Lot of, plan for that, the sensory garden and fencing and a lot of other things that Jennifer has on that list. Six-year project cost estimate 1.5 million to do all those upgrades. Parks and Rec Priority Project Number Two, Storage Facility Roof Replacements. And this is not another garden up there, but sure it looks like it could be. Six-year project cost on this is estimated about $65,000, so. Okay, okay, very good. And Information Technology Priority Project Number One, sand storage for virtual servers. Six-year cost estimate at about $480,000 over that time. General Facilities, Priority Project Number One is infrastructure improvements. This is a six-year project cost collectively of all the improvements, at just under $6 million, 5.97 million. This is an example of what one of those projects would be, the Mount Vernon Library Commons Emergency Generator. And the Priority Project Number Two is repurposing, repurposing the library facility. Six-year project cost on, on the, on the CIP, it was listed at $800,000. That was prior to contracts going out, and I think the total cost estimate on that is about 226,000. About $226,000 to get that, that project done, probably in the next 12 months, so. Fire Department Priority Project Number One, Fire Station Number One Construction, six-year cost estimate at 35 million. And number two on the fire department's list is a medical defibrillator's replacement for six-year period, about $400,000 for those. With that, I just want to point out that all the procedural requirements under Mount Vernon Municipal Code 14.05 have been met. Super review and public notice was published on July 29th. 60-day notice of intent submitted to the Department of Commerce. Adoption of the six-years CIP is required by the GMA, and it does align with GMA Planning Goal Number 12, ensuring adequate public funds for development. Any questions on this?
All right, so we have an open record public hearing, but prior to that, if council has any questions for Steve or any of the department heads or managers who may be in attendance.
Quick question.
Yep.
On the park storage facility, the roof replacement, will we put a little pitch on that so it's not flat?
Did you get the question, Jennifer? Are we going to pitch the roof on the
So it's not flat?
Storage facility.
That is not what we have a quote for. We have a quote for replacing it as, as it currently exists. I could look into that. I know if that's, if that's a desire.
I, I was just curious, looking at
It's a very, very old roof.
I suppose we're not in Chicago where there's a lot of snow, so, I mean, always with that flat stuff, you worry about the weight, but.
Any online questions? Okay, I am going to end the public hearing for the 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come on up to the podium. Going once. All right, seeing no comments, I will close the open record public hearing. Council, the ordinance for the CIP is 3920.
I'll move to approve ordinance 3920, our CIP plan.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this. Doug, thank you for your work on this as well, and all of our department heads and managers. Okay, moving on to item C. It's an ordinance for updates to city code, and our city attorney, Kevin Rogerson, has this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. What you have before you was a opposed ordinance number 3921. This has been discussed in several committee meetings previously. Way of background, your city, the city of Mount Vernon, is organized as a non-charter code city. Fancy words, that means we don't have a constitution. Charter functions similarly like a constitution. Our organization is done by statute. A code city is a method under statute that grants the city of Mount Vernon the greatest powers afforded by operation of law of any city in the state of Washington. That's not disallowed either by statute or state constitution. You're organized under what's called a mayor council plan of government. Some people call it a strong mayor because it functions similarly to the federal branches of government. You have an executive power, you have a legislative power. Part of the state laws that organize the city includes that you have the inherent authority to regulate your internal affairs. That's found under chapter 2.12 of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. That chapter has not been reviewed or looked at in some time. There have been changes to state law quite recently, coming out of COVID, especially that triggered things such as a requirement to have a public hearing addressing virtual attendance. So it was asked that my office revisit this with you at committee to look at changes to regulate your internal affairs. Given your authority as a legislative body and your authority of the code city, you have a lot of discretion in how you regulate internally, how you function as a legislative body. There are guardrails. There's the Open Public Meetings Act. There is constitutional issues, but beyond that, the legal sandbox is fairly big. So the city council did engage in discussion during several regularly held committee meetings regarding potential amendments to that chapter. And before you, as an ordinance proposed, you should have a clean copy and a marked copy that reflects what input was provided during the committee meetings. And I'll just give you a bright, a broad roadmap of what amendments are included in the proposed ordinance. So there have been amendments consistent with the changes to the Washington State Open Public Meetings Act, particularly with regard to public hearings. Whenever you take final action, you do have to provide an opportunity for public comment, so that's now been included in your code. It also deals with the virtual attendance, which is allowed and being practiced today, and what rules will govern when virtual attendance will be allowed, under what grounds, and what kind of notice we would like to receive. In addition, you will see after every citation to statute, a phrase as now exists or hereafter amended, that is a legal term of art to say that if this law changes in the future, you don't have to go back with a new ordinance to reflect the change. It automatically gets adopted into your code. Therefore, it keeps you up to date without having to take any further legislative action. There is amendments to the city council standing committees when such meetings shall occur and types of committees, which reflect your ongoing practice. You reorganize your committees. And instead of having to do special meetings for each one, being adopted in your code, it becomes a regular meeting. You don't have to do that type of publication. This one does remove regularly held study sessions of the city council, so you will have regular meetings twice a month. The study session will not be a regular meeting. That doesn't prevent you from doing a study session. All it does is require you to do it as a special meeting. There are amendments to agenda-setting schedules and the responsible officials to conform to current practice. Amendments to procedures for excusing council members for non-attendance. Allowing for consent agenda and amending council meetings order of business. And amending city council internal rules of debate and rules for addressing the city council by the public. So all of those discussions and inputs should be reflected in the ordinance provided for you. If you have any questions as to the content, we're than happy to answer.
Questions for Kevin? Comments from council? And one of the comments, public comments tonight was about when agenda requests were submitted for staff. And we require that to be the Monday prior to the week. So that's an internal function. I'm not sure if I missed the intent of the commenter, but I understood it to be his concern with transparency, and I believe the, the change would provide us the ability to provide better transparency, to get the agendas out in a timely manner and for staff
better transparency, to get the agendas out in a timely manner and for staff to function, and pull all the memos together in, in a timely manner. So be happy to discuss that if you had questions on that. But I think, I think we're accomplishing what his concern actually was, so.
The time limit that he also addressed, I, I feel that if it was offered as a three to five, three minutes, do you need more time than that kind of a question as you were asking tonight? I think that covers that concern as well. I mean, it's not like we're trying, we don't really cut people off at three minutes anyway, so it's more just, and, you know, this is, this is what we're, that we're moving for so that we have more, more time for more people, if we have more people that come.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning. If there are no other questions or comments, this would be ordinance 3921.
I'd move to approve ordinance 3921.
Second.
Motion by Gary and a second by Yedis. More discussion on this one. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks for your work on that. And thank you, council, for working through that. Item D is a resolution and agreement for the surplus and donation of fire equipment. I'm Mount Vernon Fire Chief Brian Harris is here. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Like the mayor stated tonight, for you is a resolution 1084 to donate surplus fire equipment. To provide some background for you all, staff has requested council approve the donation of those fire hose nozzles to the fire science program of Skagit Valley College. Skagit Valley College students can earn an associate's degree, and the program provides training and education for students wishing to begin a career in the fire service, attain a higher level of education, or prepare for career advancement. These items being donated are obsolete to the fire, fire department operations. Over the past four years, we've been transitioning to firefighting operations that increase firefighter safety and make clotheslines easier to handle. This has used, resulted, excuse me, in the replacement of interior firefighting nozzles and necessitated a different type of hose. These updates have been done systematically with annual hose and nozzle replacements within our operational budgets, and the use of ARBA funds in late 2024 allowed us to purchase the remaining hose and nozzles needed to update the entire fleet. Due to age and use, the donated items have no resale value. NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, 1962, covers the testing and maintenance of fire hose and nozzles. No lifespan is placed on hose and nozzles so long as they pass an annual pressure test and a physical inspection, which revealed, which would reveal if the hose is serviceable or not. Generally accepted lifespan on fire hose is about 10 to 12 years. Most of the hose that we will be donating and the nozzles to the college are between 10 and 20 years old, having reached the end of their service life of operation in the fire department. Donating the hose and nozzles will give the team, or will give the college life beyond life in the actual fire service. Investing these resources back into our community is a responsible use of our public assets. Consulted with Kevin Rogerson, city attorney, who drafted an agreement for intergovernmental transfer of surplus fire equipment to the Skagit Valley College, which they have signed already. And if there aren't any questions about the ask, I will proceed with the reading of the resolution.
Questions for chief? Okay.
Okay. Again, this is resolution number 1084, the resolution by the city of Mount Vernon, Washington, declaring fire hose, nozzles, and foam tubes as surplus, and transferring the equipment to Skagit Valley College Fire Science Program. Whereas, the city of Mount Vernon owns 40 lengths of inch and three-quarter hose, 30 combination high-pressure nozzles, and three foam tubes. And whereas, listed fire suppression equipment is no longer needed nor usable by the Mount Vernon Fire Department. And whereas, listed equipment has use for training purposes and has request, and has requested the donation of the listed equipment to Skagit Valley College Fire Science Program. Whereas, the listed equipment will have no use, or will have use, to the Skagit Valley College Fire Science Program, and the training and continuing education of those seeking fire service training and education. And whereas, the city finds that the donation of the described listed equipment above is appropriate for donation to the Skagit Valley College Fire Science Program.
All right, council, this is resolution 1084. Would you like to move that we adopt?
Second.
Motion by Navor and a second by Yedis. Any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Passes, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Item E is an agreement with Romtech for a facility upgrade at Little Mountain Park, and our Parks and Rec Director Jennifer Berners here. Jennifer?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. So we are in need of a replacement of a vault toilet at the top of Little Mountain. The city is utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement to contract this particular unit. The benefit of cooperative purchasing agreement is, of course, cost savings and time savings. The project is in the council-approved CIP budget for 2025. And in the Little Mountain Parks Fund, we have 80,000 budgeted in there. The city also received a $30,000 grant for this particular project. If you recall, that was the one that I mentioned to you, where the gal was up there, noticed the bathroom, and she was saying she had a grant. Her and her husband have a program of see a need, fix it. And so that's where we received the grant for this particular project as well, which is gonna propel it forward for us this year. The total funding for this project will be $110,000. The purchase agreement for the vault toilet is 79,891 plus tax. And then staff will be performing all of the prep work and the finish work, and signage and path and things like that, that will also, you know, cause some more expense than just the vault toilet. We don't, we will not exceed the $110,000 that is in there for this project.
Questions for Jennifer? Anyone had to stop by the vault toilet at the top of Little Mountain ever?
It is not the prettiest--
No, this is a public safety--
I think last year--
--public health upgrade as well, I think.
I think last year in the CIP, we had a lovely picture of it for you.
I didn't--
We're all still recovering from that.
I didn't even realize it was operational. I mean, I just look at it and go, ooh.
It doesn't look very user-friendly, does it?
It did not.
Well, one user was motivated to donate $30,000, and we thank her and her husband for that.
This one will look much nicer.
Then, if there is no questions at this, I would like to move the motion and approve this for Little Mountain Project. Thank you.
Motion by Yedis and a second by Navor. Any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Item F is an agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce for a climate planning grant, and our Development Services Principal Planner Rebecca Bradley-Low is this item. Hello, Rebecca.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. As the mayor stated, I'm here tonight for approval of a agreement with the Department of Commerce. As most of you will probably recall, in 2024, our department received two grants, one for a periodic update of our comprehensive plan, and the other grant was for the climate planning elements that we needed to complete as part of the periodic update. The state, as you know, has a two-year budgetary cycle, which meant that their biennium budget ended in June of this year, and so did the climate grant funding. It wasn't aligned with the end of our periodic review update cycle. So like, in many jurisdictions, ended up in the same position where we were, where we hadn't spent all of the funds that we were awarded, and it had come to an end. So to resolve that issue, the state went out, and they allowed many jurisdictions, including the city, to reapply for a portion of the grant funds that we hadn't spent yet, which our department did. And we received a total of, I think it's $183,000, which is the amount of the agreement that's before you this evening, and it has an expiration date coming up here pretty soon, the end of the year. So with that, we would ask for council's approval of this contract.
All right, questions for Rebecca?
Happy we were able to get the grant. It was nice that they made it available again.
Yes.
I would move to approve the amended grant contract.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Navor. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Passes, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
That is the end of our new business. So for item seven, I will ask our city attorney to please search your records, search your computer, your files, the inner recess of your photographic memory, and tell us, is there a need for executive session tonight?
There is not.
With that, we will adjourn at 8:00 p.m.